Heather, can you give me a thumbs up if we're good to go? Thanks. All right. Hello, everybody. Good evening. I would like to call the November 19th, 2020 North Hills Board of Education Legislative Meeting to Order. I'll begin this evening by taking a roll call for attendance. Ms. Cozera?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Dr. Knowlesch? Dr. Knowlesch?
She may be muted.
She's, yeah, she's, she's not muted, actually, but she's not speaking, but she is present. I'll, I'll keep moving on. Ms. Philpot?
Here.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Here.
Mrs. Reed?
Here.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Here.
Mrs. Spade?
Here.
And I am also present this evening. I forgot to share my screen, so just give me a moment, please. Okay, I'll ask everybody to please rise for a moment of silence and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Good evening again, everybody. I would like to announce that the board met an executive session on November 12th, 2020 to discuss personnel and legal matters. Do we have any other comments from any other board members this evening?
This is Mathis. I am here. This is Dr. Knowlesch.
Thank you.
Having technical difficulties.
Thank you, Dr. Knowlesch. Okay, doesn't, doesn't look like we have any other board comments this evening, so then I will move on to approval of minutes. I would like to move that the board approve the minutes of the October 15th, 2020 Committee Meeting with Action. Is there a second?
Ms. Spade, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Cozera?
Hi.
Mr. Little?
Hi.
Dr. Knowlesch?
Hi.
Ms. Philpot?
Hi.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Hi.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Hi.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I also vote aye. Thank you. Motion carries, and we will move on to Dr. Manarino and the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm gonna share my screen with the presentation. We actually have a few presentations tonight. There's my presentation followed by Dr. Williams has a presentation on education, and Mr. Swindell is with us for a presentation on facilities and how we've been handling the coronavirus and the cleanings in our buildings during this time. Okay, there we go. Okay, earlier this week, I did a presentation in a video about kind of what's happening with our shift to virtual, where we are with the situation with the coronavirus in our community and how it impacts education. And so that's really what my presentation is tonight. It's a quick little recap on where we are and kind of what's happening and hopefully where we're moving towards in the near future, and that's back to traditional. So as you look at this, this is the indication that the district is going remotely through Friday, December 4th. There is no school on Wednesday, November 25th through November 30th for the Thanksgiving holiday. And you can see here, the calendar has been adjusted to show those dates that have now been moved to virtual with the hope to return to Group A in a hybrid format on December 7th. Now, over the next week or so, 10 days, we're going to be continuing to monitor the situation, monitoring the cases that are occurring in the community. And we're going to take a focus on what the cases are doing in Ross and Westview. I think we've seen and we've heard that the cases are having minimal impact on schools. So what we're dealing with right now is a spike in the virus in the community and a spike in the virus in Ross and Westview along with Allegheny County. So we met with the, we being the superintendents, met with the Department of Health Education on Monday, and they asked that we move to a virtual format as quickly as possible as they were seeing the spike coming and continuing to grow. So really, it's up to us at this point to get this virus under control and us as all of us, you know, to continue to socially distant, wear masks and do those things that we need to do to get the virus under control so that we can resume our activities in a hybrid format on December 7th. We'll make a final determination by Friday, December 4th as to what direction we're going to go on the 7th. And so for right now, the plan is to move to hybrid on the 7th, but if we do change that decision, you'll be notified by December 4th of those changes for the week of December 7th. At this point, all North Hill School District buildings are going to be closed November 21st through November 30th. We are going to continue the meal pickup today or tomorrow and on Monday. So we're moving all of the meal pickups that we had planned for Tuesday to Monday, so Monday's pickup is actually four days' worth of meals. So if you haven't signed up for Monday's pickup, please do so. This is a temporary closure. This is going to give us a little bit of time to seek some guidance from Allegheny County as we moved to substantial, and that's really what the move to prompt us to move to remote is coming from, is that our number is in a substantial rate. And that's what the call with the Department of Education was about. It was about substantial, what schools kind of need to do moving forward. They were hopeful that it was a one-week situation and that we could get back to a moderate level of spread. That's obviously not going to happen. We've had over 600 the last two days, and we had over 500 on Monday. So I think reading the leaves in front of us, if you open tomorrow's information on the dashboard on PDE, Allegheny County will continue to be substantial. So that's really what we have to look at to move those numbers back to a moderate to resume the hybrid instruction that we've been doing. The, the move was to preserve Thanksgiving holidays for families, and like I've said, also to give us the best shot at a consistent in-person instruction throughout December. So this is the dashboard that is talking about community transmission. You can see that the state goes back all the way to July 31st in their weekly monitoring of this, and we were moderate all the way through the week of 11/13, which is the week that we're in right now. So you can see that when we are moderate blended learning model or full remote learning are the options. And blended here is the terms that the state has used, but our blended model is our hybrid model right now. We created a blended model that is a little bit different, but when you're looking at this state's website, when it says blended learning, that's, that's something not traditional, something not virtual. So that's our hybrid model, and as you can see in this chart, we are substantial, and we will more than likely be substantial when this report comes out tomorrow. So what we're asking again is to really follow the CDC guidelines in all aspects of our life. And I know that Allegheny County has come forward with their advisory that talks about mask wearing and maintaining social distances, and just continue to wash your hands and follow the state's guidance for the 14-day quarantine after travel outside of the state of Pennsylvania. And those are the things that are going to allow us to return to a hybrid format, hopefully again on December 7th. We are still getting reports from Allegheny County Health Department of positive cases. I was afraid that that might not happen based upon the amount of cases that are occurring in the community. But as of yesterday, we're still receiving reports, but it'll be helpful to us if there is a positive case of a student or a staff member that occurs, if you could notify either me or the school nurse so that we can just continue with our COVID tracker and then make a really good decision about the direction that we need to go when we get back to that hybrid format on December 7th.
I ask a question here.
I was just gonna say, do you have any questions? Because that's really all I have.
Okay, I have one question. What about parents? I know of parents that have checked positive for Corona, but they still send their children to school. Shouldn't their children be quarantined?
Right, but that would go through the contact tracing with the Allegheny County Health Department. And that's, again, we've said a dozen times that the district does not quarantine, that that's what the health department is supposed to do. So through contact tracing, when that parent is notified or contacted by the Allegheny County Health Department, it's really up to them to, to relay who the close contacts are for them to, for the close, for the contact tracers to do their jobs. And I know they've, I've heard on multiple news channels that people aren't cooperating with the contact tracers, which is only making things a little bit more difficult. So I can only give you the information that I have and the information that's been given to me. So if there are parents out there that have the virus and have chosen not to quarantine their children, there's really no way for us to know because we're only notified at the school of cases that are either a student or a teacher. We're not notified of every case that occurs in our community of Ross and Westview.
So therefore, we don't, we don't have the handle on how many parents are sick or exposed to it?
No, there's no way for us to know that.
Dr. Manarino, weren't there some specific concerns too about when we hit a daily count of more than 500 that the county health department was not going to be able to help us with some of the contact tracing that they had been?
Right, that's, that's where they were last week with the presentation, but when we met today, they kind of have reorganized their contact tracers. I'm not sure if they have received more contact tracers, but the way that it's now set up is there's three specific contacts for schools at the Allegheny County Health Department. There was five or six last week, so I don't know if they've redeployed folks that are in different contact tracing roles. But as I said, we're still getting information, and it's timely. It's, you know, today, and it wasn't today, this was yesterday. We actually had nobody today. We had no emails today about any positive cases associated with the district. But yesterday, we received an email that said, today we were notified that a student tested positive, and you saw that report came out or that information came out from Heather yesterday. So that's how it's working. So as of yesterday, we were still being contacted by them. I, I think that they were concerned that they were going to get overrun with the number of cases that we had and not be able to do the contact tracing to the level that they were doing with us before. But again, as of yesterday, everything has been working the way it has been since we started.
I have another question. On December 4th, you're going to make the announcement as to whether we're going to stay virtual, go back hybrid, correct?
Yeah.
Are you making that decision or are you pulling the board?
I actually don't know yet, so let's take a look at the numbers and see where we are with it. And if it's pretty crystal clear that we are not in a substantial, then we'll move back to hybrid. That's what we're doing right now. So the plan is to go back to hybrid. It's if we would continue to go to virtual that we would notify. Oops.
Okay. And you'll make that decision?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And you had mentioned contact with PDE and what their recommendations are. Are we also utilizing the Allegheny County Health Department since their data is more specific to our area and what their recommendations are?
Yes, absolutely. The difficult part is the Department of Education and the Pennsylvania Department of Health work together to build those guidelines. And I think I said this this week also, those guidelines were developed in August before we ever came back to school, before we ever put the health and safety plans that were developed by all 500, 600 school districts in Pennsylvania to see whether they would be working or not working. And I've mentioned, they're working. We got some statistics today that showed that schools are about 1% of the cases that are occurring in Allegheny County. And so the numbers are extremely low when they're attributed to outbreaks in school. So that's the, that's the good news. The bad news is, is the recommendation from PDE is substantial, and they were not heavy-handed, but they were pretty stern about following their recommendations at this time. But they also said that they're, they have been reviewing those recommendations with the Department of Health, and we're hopeful that those recommendations could change because now you have four months' worth of data showing that kids are wearing their masks in school, teachers are wearing their masks, kids are staying socially distant. And the schools that are operating in a hybrid model like we are are having to quarantine very, very few people. And that's not just us. That's schools across, you know, the whole Commonwealth that are operating in a similar model. The more students you have in the classroom, the more likelihood you have of, of having to enter into quarantine or community spread. So I'm just hoping that they're not going to get overwhelmed by kind of the numbers where they are right now, and it goes a different direction. I think we know from the advisory that we received yesterday from Allegheny County, it's starting to look like that. But I'm hopeful that, again, we can get the numbers under control to a, a point that we can resume hybrid activities as quickly as possible.
So I'm sure you've been on the phone with the health department on a daily basis, pretty much. Are they happy and okay with how we are running in a hybrid model? Do they have any concerns with our model?
Not with the North Hill School District, no. They're actually very happy with what we're doing. And, and I've said before, we wouldn't have shut down the high school had we not had, and we had a number of cases in, in November, when we had to around the election. But had we not had, I think, seven or eight cases with having one in-person instruction day for each group that week, we wouldn't have shut down. It was, it was just kind of that perfect storm of, and like Luanne said to me, at this point, why bother? You're, you're talking one instructional day. So that was the shutdown at the beginning of November. But, you know, she continued, can, continues to say that our plan is working. And that's not, again, our plan at North Hills. That's across the Allegheny County, is that our numbers in schools with students and teachers is low. And there's not this community spread coming from schools. So that's all helpful, but when we have guidance from the Department of Education that's telling us to go back to virtual is where it becomes a little bit difficult. When we have an advisory from Allegheny County to stay home, that's when it becomes a little difficult. Now, there's some hope in that advisory, and I think you know that, that it says to work and school. And so I'm hopeful for that. So I'm, I'm looking at all numbers, and I look at the Ross Township numbers and the Westview numbers, and I think those two, to me, are the most important. And unfortunately, those are really high right now and going up, which means that our parents have it, like, you know, Kathy was saying, whether we know it or we don't know it, it's in our community. And so that's where I get a little bit more nervous about it. If our numbers in Ross and Westview are low and they're high in Allegheny County, I feel a little more comfortable about us moving forward. But right now, when you're looking at the statistics that they're using to determine substantial, it would be over 100 per 100,000 people in Allegheny County. Last week, we were at 138. Well, last week in Ross and Westview, based upon our, our population of those two municipalities, we were at 208 of 100,000 cases. So there is a spread in our community, and that's the one statistic that I'm personally looking at. And I'm getting that data directly off the Allegheny County Health Department website. So again, if we can get this under control in our communities, let's go, because they're safe in school. We built our hybrid model where teachers are more than six feet away from students. At 50% capacity, students are more than six feet away from each other, and the cases that we've had to deal with have not been linked to each other for the most part or to the school, which is all good news. It's all things that are occurring outside of the school. And I'm not telling people not to live. That's not what this is saying. You're going to get the virus at Home Depot. You're going to get the virus at Giant Eagle. It's possible. So I'm not, this is not chastising or criticizing. This is just the reality of the fact that our schools are safe. And so when we can get our numbers in our community to a controllable number, let's go back to school. Anything else before we pass this on to Dr. Williams and her education report?
Dr. Manarino, are we doing the student representatives' report next? That's actually what's next on the agenda.
Hannah, go ahead.
No, we actually don't have a report for this meeting.
Well, thank you for coming anyway, Hannah.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen again. Dr. Williams, you ready?
I'm ready.
If I miss it, just say next slide.
I will say next slide. Thank you for sharing your screen. Good evening.
I'm, I'm so sorry to keep interrupting, but we have some public comments next on the agenda. You want me to just do those after the presentation?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so if anybody has any public comments on agenda items only now, you can please raise your hand virtually, and I will bring you up to speak. And if there is somebody, I will then read our comment policy. Doesn't look like anybody's raised their hand, but I'll just give you guys a minute to find the virtual hand raise button. Okay, no public comments on agenda items? Then we'll go to Dr. Williams' report.
There we go.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis. Thank you, Dr. Manarino. So I am here this evening to give you an educational update. I can move to the next slide, please, Dr. Manarino. The world of education changed dramatically last March for school districts, colleges, universities, trade and tech schools everywhere, not just here in Pennsylvania, but of course, across the world, as we were all forced to make very dramatic changes into how we delivered instruction as a result of the global pandemic COVID-19. So the traditional academic measures that I would typically report on that we use, such as the PSSAs and Keystones, did not occur as students, parents, and teachers were forced to quickly adapt to virtual asynchronous teaching and learning in our district. Next slide, please. So when you look at trying to analyze and compare data from last year, in particular, the spring, with previous year's data or even this year's first nine weeks, it's really, really challenging to do that as the models were and are still very, very different from each other. Also, the lack of those historic tests and changes to our grading model from last spring to this fall do not really provide us with a clear and neutral data point of comparison. So as the pandemic continues, schools, including North Hills, continue to make adjustments to their educational models to balance both the educational demands as well as the health and safety demands of our students and our staff. So if we don't have any data sets to really, really examine and compare, how do we go ahead and prepare for this school year? Next slide, please. So planning actually began in late May and early June over the summer. And as you know, we solicited feedback from teachers, from parents, that allowed us to identify very quickly areas of success and some areas of need. And we quickly recognized that there were some patterns out there that allowed us to make decisions to plan for the 2021 school year. And a big part of that planning was an increased emphasis on professional development. And that professional development was key because it contained things such as collaboration meetings. Before the year started, we gave teachers extended day and extended time to sit down and have those meetings. And in those meetings, they met as teams and reviewed curriculum taught and assessed from May, or I'm sorry, from March to May of 2020 to really talk about what standards that they taught and how they taught them. They reviewed student data performance from last year. How were the last year's early diagnostic test results compared with what they were doing formatively in the classrooms? They looked at all those different things as well as observational results and things as well. Those meetings enabled teachers and administrators to make adjustments to the scope and sequences of the curriculum. They talked about creating pre-assessments to measure student learning, and they began to address the instruction accordingly to meet the needs of the students. So we took a lot of time to make sure that that was able to happen. Next slide, please. We also planned for the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year by reviewing our grading policy. And in the past, we've had semesters for grading. This year, we moved into it. We made the change to go ahead and shift to a four-quarter approach again as we had a long while ago in the past. And we thought this was really important because it would enable students to have a fresh start every nine weeks, particularly as we weren't sure as to what the school year was going to look like and how many transitions we were going to have to make between different operational models. As I said, our professional development really stressed the importance of pre-assessments, coming in, introducing a topic, giving students a quick pre-assessment to see what they knew about the topic or what they did. So teachers could adjust their instruction accordingly. The other part that we really wanted to focus on is we asked our teachers to go ahead and provide live and recorded lessons in order to support both our students' academic and social emotional needs. And I will tell you, there are some districts that are recording lessons, or I'm sorry, providing live lessons around us, but they may not be doing recorded lessons, or they might be providing recorded lessons, but they're not doing live. I'm very proud to say that North Hills is doing both because we recognize the need for students to have access to be able to go back and view those lessons if they needed to see them again, if they had additional questions or needed to brush up on something. And we also recognize the importance of kids being able to interact with their teachers online and their peers for the social emotional reasons. Next slide, please. The district, um, has always relied on diagnostic testing, not only because it provides information regarding students' learning and growth, but it also is critical to helping teachers design their plan of instruction. It very quickly points out what students know and some areas that they need to continue to work on and reinforce. So again, allows them to meet the diverse learning needs of their students. We have recently just completed all of our baseline diagnostic testing in English and math across the district. And that testing in ELA and mathematics includes I-ready testing, STAR testing, and the CDTs are the classroom diagnostic test. Next slide, please. That diagnostic testing data, in conjunction with pre-assessments, formative testing data, observations while working with students, is reviewed at weekly or bi-monthly data team meetings. Those collaborative meetings are invaluable. They include teachers, administrators, school counselors, specialists, and they're very, very important because they help us look at that data to establish a specific learning plan for a student or students. It allows us then to communicate with all the stakeholders. So all the teachers, the school counselor, the administrator, and the parents, the student, all understand what the learning plan is. And then they set in place how they're going to go ahead and monitor that plan to make sure that we are meeting success and to determine if we need to make additions or tweaks to that plan as things move forward. The other part of that is, it's very, very important to note that our teachers do a fantastic job, again, with these live Zoom lessons for, and recordings for direct instruction. Again, I can't stress enough the importance of continuing to build connections with teachers and classmates and how important that is. And again, they do a fantastic job with that, and it allows kids to feel comfortable despite whatever model we're in to go ahead and reach out and ask for help and participate in class and ask questions and be connected to our staff and to our teachers. Next slide, Dr. Manarino. National research that I've been looking at specifically from a couple of educational think tanks located down in Washington, DC have come out and said, look, here's some suggestions that all schools need to work on in order to facilitate or meet the needs of what is being called now COVID-generation students. And as you can see, the suggestions are below: making sure we're providing equitable access to learning, that there's teacher collaboration and coordination regarding instruction, that we're differentiating that instruction to meet student needs. Students learn at different rates, learn in different ways. How are we differentiating our instruction to meet those needs? Creating obtainable goals, creating those learning paths for students. Implementation of flexible and personalized interventions to support students. What does that need to look like? And making sure we're building relationships to support social emotional needs. These think tanks feel that this, these are some of the most critical aspects that we need to be doing in education today for the, again, quote-unquote, the COVID-generation students. And I'm very proud, as I look at that list, to say, we're doing that. What we are doing with our professional development, what our teachers are doing every single day is in alignment with what the experts in education are saying we should be doing to facilitate the learning needs and the growth and development of our students. Next slide, please, Dr. Manarino. Next, I wanted to speak specifically to our special education program. So the district continues to be in communication with the state and follow any recommended guidelines that pertain to special education. And data analysis is equally critical for special education. So baseline data is currently being collected and will continue to be collected via progress monitoring to ensure that we have a very accurate picture of our student needs. IEP team meetings can be conveyed at any time to discuss needs or address new concerns and to make any changes that we deem necessary or the team deems necessary. Again, Dr. Manarino, next slide. If additional services are determined to be If additional services are determined to be needed, plans obviously will be made, as I said, through the IEP to definitely meet those needs. Next slide, please. With regard to our English language learners, Lost Links is a diagnostic testing that is used by the DRC or recommended by the DRC. And we're currently using that with our English language learners. And this diagnostic testing is very important because it helps us to determine if any regression has occurred as a result of the school closures. So we know, again, instructionally, what methodology that we need to implement in order to best meet our students' needs. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, while I cannot provide you with very specific traditional data analysis that I normally do as tied to the PSSAs or the Keystone scores that I have in the past, I'm pleased to say that our preparations for the 2020-21 school year are aligned to what national experts are suggesting. I'm really happy that we're gathering our baseline data because now we can analyze our true North Hill student data to determine if there are trends and are there are patterns that we need to be aware of. Are there gaps that we need to go ahead and make adjustments to the curriculum and to the instruction to meet the needs of our students? And again, the reason that is so important is many of you may have seen news stories and projections beginning as early as last spring as to what all these closures were going to do, right? Talking about the COVID slide and how bad it was going to be and what this was going to look like. I urge caution when looking at that. Those are statistical models that are based upon predictions and projections. They are not based upon true current data. Again, statistical models making predictions. That's why it's so important to use the diagnostic data that we have now to truly dig down into that data and get a truer picture of where our students are at and where they need to move forward. Are there any questions?
I have a question, Dr. Williams. Are you looking at all, I mean collectively, like the first quarter grades and speaking to teachers about what percentage of kids are failing or getting a C or below this year as compared to in a, you know, traditional school year? And I guess my second part of the question is, are there any adaptations or changes that are going to be made between quarter one and quarter two moving forward to improve that situation?
I think a couple of different things. I think the principals are looking at doing some grade analysis, which is kind of tricky because again, you're looking at a semester grade analysis versus what we now have as quarter analysis. Is there obviously authenticity and importance in looking at what our current grades are? Absolutely, there is. And can we tie that back to, do we need to go ahead and look at tweaking the curriculum? Do we need to, again, look at what we're teaching, how we're teaching it facing? Do we need to look at extension activities? Do we need to look at different things? Do we need to look at whatever? Yes, we will continue to do that. I think the diagnostic and formative testing data that we have are going to unlock some keys. I will continue to stress that I think our teachers are doing a great job as well as our principals in reaching out to families, particularly with making sure that we're encouraging kids as much as possible to attend the live Zoom meetings. We know there are kids sometimes that are sick. There's childcare issues that they have to watch the recordings. I think it's really, really important that we continue to understand that our teachers are working really hard every single day to provide live instruction. And the best thing our kids can do from an academic standpoint is to attend those Zooms live and in person, or in live. And then obviously, it's good for them socially and emotionally. So we're looking at all of those different pieces and to see what's next. And I will be reaching out to the curriculum leaders, K through six for math and ELA with this diagnostic data. And then again, the seven through 12 curriculum leaders, particularly in English and math, to see what it is. That's short term. Long term, and you're going to see here as we move forward a little bit, we need to also start talking about what we think are some of these trends and patterns and what it needs to be with summer opportunities. We do offer summer programming. Last summer, obviously, because of COVID, we didn't offer summer programming. We've started the conversations about what summer programming should we be offering? I know the elementary traditionally offers both reading and math. Do we need to extend that? Does that need to move into the middle school? Do we need to look at doing some things with the high school? All those conversations are on the table. And my hope is now that we have our own North Hills data, we are going to have a better idea of what direction we need to go rather than kind of just making guesses and inferences now that we have nine weeks with kids.
Thank you.
Any other questions that I can answer? Okay.
Yeah, hi. So you mentioned the standardized testing. Am I correct? We've talked about this before, but we're still, as far as we know, standardized testing is still happening on schedule the upcoming year.
Fabulous part of my presentation, Ms. Casera. Yes, it is, and we're going to talk specifically about what that means for the keystones. Yes, PSSAs are still scheduled to occur. Keystones are also still scheduled to occur. Again, we received direction from the federal government saying, look, because of ASA, Every Student Succeeds Act, that yes, those tests are still continuing. We also received notifications from the state of Pennsylvania that they have some concerns with those tests continuing this year. And their concerns are, again, because of the different modes and models of educational things that are happening in every single school district. And they're also still concerned about the equity. Some districts were late getting iPads or late getting technology because of grants and things as such. So they're very, very concerned about that. So I know the state is continuing to pursue, the state of Pennsylvania, as to whether or not we should be doing that. But according to the federal government, yes, PSSAs will occur this year, as will keystones. And we actually do need to speak about keystones here as soon as questions are done.
Thanks. I do have one more question. And I don't know if this is, this is probably very individualized, but does any of your research talk about what parents who may be concerned can do? I mean, you know, certainly, parents are in situations where their kids are learning subjects that they're not familiar with, or the parents are unavailable. And I know there's been a lot of struggle and frustration with, you know, kids just kind of not getting it. And maybe that's not something that, either it's not in our face normally because the kids are at school or it's just, it's a struggle for whatever reason. So I don't know if there's any sort of overarching global suggestions about how parents can help their students or if that's more of an individualized, you know, teacher-parent conversation that needs to happen.
Great question. I think the biggest thing that we can do, particularly, again, I would say this is a global suggestion, but I would certainly say this with North Hills because of care and concern and dedication of our teachers and our administrators. I would urge those parents to please reach out to their schools. I would urge them to talk to them and say, hey, here's what we're struggling with at home. You know, what other resources can we have? What other assistance can you offer? What else can you do? Because they have been very creative and thinking out of the box of coming up with different implementation strategies and strategies to help. Again, whether it's National Honor Society, students have willingly given up time to tutor kids, whether it's been homework help that's being offered at the elementary school, even virtually. There has been opportunities where we've done, reached out to try and meet those needs. So if there are any concerns, any parents, any students watching this that are struggling or you know of anyone, please have them reach out to the buildings. They have done a phenomenal job. I can't say enough about our administrators, the principals, and our teachers. Great question.
Phil Pot had a question.
Yes. So I guess just to clarify, so right now, what we're doing as a district is looking at the things like the iReady tests and whatnot and analyzing the data that we got. So at some point, we're going to be able to say, you know, X percentage of first graders are where they're supposed to be compared to what X percentage were last year. And then, right?
Yes, I think I'll be able to come back to you after I talk to the curriculum leader and I sit down and talk with it. I'm going to be able to come back and tell you what trends are we're seeing. There is another huge data report coming out based on STAR testing. I just attended a webinar the other day. STAR testing at this point in time has had 5.3 million students across the United States test. It's a diagnostic test, again, benchmarking, what do you know? Helping teachers guide their instruction. They're coming out with a report from a national level, basically letting us know what trends they're seeing nationally in both ELA, English, and in math. I'm really curious to get my hands on that report because I think it's going to be very interesting to see that. And then I want to be able to compare our data and what trends we're seeing and where we're seeing, hey, this is some areas that we're kind of struggling in or this is where we need to really look at some supports or programming for. I'm going to see if we're mirroring what's going on at a national level or if we just look different. So I think I should be able to come back to you here, I would say in January, and come back and say, okay, this is where we're at and this is what we know. And here's some changes or some new things that we're doing as we continue to learn more about what's going on. Absolutely.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Doesn't appear to be.
Okay, Dr. Manarino, I think it was a pleasure going back and talking about keystones now. So if you could share, thank you. So as Ms. Casera already asked me and I indicated, we are still mandated to go ahead and we are still going, scheduled to give the PSSAs in April. The Keystone testing is scheduled in May. The keystones look a little bit different, and I'm going to talk to you why that looks a little different. So any student who is currently enrolled in Algebra I, Biology, or the 10th grade English Literature course must take the Keystone exam upon the completion of the aligned course. These exams are a requirement of the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and they align with the federal Every Student Succeeds Act or ASA. Next slide, please, Dr. Manarino. Students who did not take the exam last spring due to COVID-19 are not required to make those exams up. So last year, if you were in Algebra, Biology, or English Literature, 10th grade English Literature, you do not have to make those exams up. However, here's where it gets tricky. The statewide graduation requirements regarding the Keystone exams continue to remain in effect beginning with the class of 2022, which means, and you can go ahead and forward the slide, Dr. Manarino, what the state is saying is, in order to graduate, beginning with the class of 2022, you have to go ahead and meet one of these five different pathways. You either must prove that you're Keystone proficient, which means you've passed all three Keystone exams. You must do the Keystone composite pathway, which means you have to have a combined score of 4,452 on the English, Bio, and Algebra I exam. If you don't meet the Keystone proficiency pathway, there's three other pathways that can allow you to still meet that graduation requirement, again, beginning with the class of 2022, that's our current juniors. You can do the alternate assessment pathway, as you can see here, which means you have to get a minimum score on at least one standardized test, as listed there, SAT, PSAT, ACT, ASVAB, or gain acceptance to a four-year college. You can also meet the graduation requirement by doing the evidence-based pathway, which is creating a portfolio with three pieces of evidence working toward the student's goals and career plan. So again, acceptance to a community college. It would be an industry credential, a letter of full-time employment, service training project, things as such. And there's guidance about each one of those things would look like. Or the fifth pathway is the CTA pathway, CTE, which is the attainment of an industry-based competency certification related to the student's program study. That's basically the ASVAB's at Beatty. So again, what this puts us in a position of, there's some choices that we need to look at. So again, middle and high school students, middle and high schools will send a letter to all students who were scheduled to attempt a Keystone assessment last year. So if you were last year supposed to take Algebra I, Biology, or Keystone, they're going to send a letter to you and basically say, do you want to go ahead and take the Keystone? Because if you take it, right, and then you pass all three, or you create that composite score, then you're going to go ahead and meet that graduation requirement. If you choose not to take it, because remember, if you didn't take it last year, you do not have to make it up. If you choose not to take it, that's okay, but here's what the situation itself in. You must meet that graduation requirement by one of the other three pathways that I just mentioned. So for those kids who last year did not take a Keystone and they're in the class 2022 or above, we still have to get them to meet that graduation requirement. So do they want to go ahead and take the Keystone test a year later, six, eight months later? Or are they going to count on a different pathway to meet that requirement? If you are currently enrolled in a Keystone, you still have to take that test. If you're currently in a Keystone, you have to take the test at the end of this course. Thanks, Dr. Manarino. Next slide. So either way, there's going to be some choices. So parents should be looking forward to, in a letter that will be coming home from both the high school or middle school, in the event, again, that their child last year should have had a Keystone, what do you want to do? Do you want to take the Keystone this year, even though you're not required to take it? Do you want to take the test? And if you have questions about, well, no, I really don't think I want to take that test, but I'm not sure how I'm going to meet this graduation requirement, they want to talk to you about what your plans are to meet that graduation requirement. Okay, so it's really not an option there, again, beginning with our class of 2022. So it's kind of confusing. It's a little bit more challenging. So look for those letters to be coming home here very soon for parents so we can make a decision. Because the Keystone window, in the winter window, is typically two weeks because there is so much chaos and confusion about what is going on, A, with the keystones, whether to take them, not take them, what pathways you can choose, as well as schools being in different models. The state has now extended that window and made that window of time a little bit larger for us to offer that test. Because the one thing the state has not and will not allow us to do is obviously administer these high-stake assessments to students when they're at home because of test security. So when we give the keystones, the students have to come into the building to take the keystones, which could be kind of tricky in the event that potentially, if we would ever be closed down and kids can't come into the building, how do we navigate that? So it's very challenging to figure out what the next step is going to be.
Questions? Dr. Williams, can you explain, I'm sorry, can you go back and explain the alternative pathways again? Because those were a little confusing.
No, that's okay. Can you go back to that slide? Two of the pathways are Keystone-based. So the way, the way there are five pathways to meet this graduation requirement.
Right, I meant the non-Keystone-based pathways.
First two are Keystone. The alternate assessment pathway is if you get a minimum score, and there's a score on each one of these tests. I can't give you the score off the top of my head. But if you hit this score on an SAT, a PSAT, an ACT, or an ASVAB, one of those tests, if you hit what that minimum score is, you've met the graduation requirement. You're good to go, regardless of what you did on the keystones, whether you passed them, whether you took them, you can go ahead and meet your graduation requirement. That's the alternate assessment.
Or if you get acceptance to any four-year college?
Or gain acceptance to any four-year college, correct. You don't have to attend it. You just have to show us that you've been accepted to it, correct.
Okay.
The third, or I'm sorry, the fourth one is that evidence-based pathway. And again, that's a portfolio, pieces of evidence working towards student's goals and career plan. And again, that's acceptance such as to CCAC. If student applied to CCAC and they are accepted there, there you go. You're good to go. Industry credential, those are very, very difficult to get. Some students may get those through Beatty. Those are challenging for students to get a letter of full-time employment or service learning project. And again, there's details specific to all that. And then the last way is the CTE pathway, and that's industry-based competency certification. That's typically the NOCTI. The challenge with the NOCTI is the NOCTI is given your senior year, and it's typically given in the spring. We do very, very well on the NOCTI exam. At North Hills has phenomenal scores, but some people might not feel comfortable putting all their eggs in one basket and waiting till the spring just for that one assessment. So those are the options that you have to meet the graduation requirement.
Thank you. And then, just one more follow-up question. What if your child takes the keystones and fails them? Does that, and fails the keystones? Is this looked at, you know, in college admittance? And not to pick on math, but I'll pick algebra, for example. Like if your child took algebra in eighth grade and now it's, you know, they missed a large chunk of it because of the spring, and now they're in a different class and haven't taken algebra for six months, it doesn't seem like they're being set up for success.
Sure, there is. We are required by the state to put Keystone scores on students' transcripts. But I will tell you, as having served as the high school principal for four years in my career and having a daughter who is a high school senior right now, I've been told over and over and over again by colleges and universities, they do not look at Keystone scores because they see that as one snapshot measure. And you cannot measure a student's potential or academic ability just based on that score. So they do not use that as a marker to say, yes, you're in school, or no. use that as a marker to say, yes, you're in school, or no, you're out of school. They're looking at a much broader picture with regard to that. And I think the state has realized that, and I think that's the reason that they've said, look, there's got to be other pathways, because not every student goes to a four-year college and university. Some students go to trade and tech schools and things such as that. So how can we demonstrate, how can they demonstrate their proficiency? So I think the state has been very mindful trying to find alternate pathways with regard to that.
Thank you. Mr. Little?
Yeah, it's more of a recommendation than it is a question. Dr. Williams, no way, shape, or form, this is on you, but I felt like I needed a decoder ring to figure out what is going on with this. Now, I understand that we'll be putting a letter out there, but my fear is, not everything gets home, right? Are we going to do follow-ups to ensure that family students understand this? Because you lost me on some of it, to be honest with you. Nothing to you, but it's wacky.
It's confusing and convoluted, and I was like, the high school, and we're really concerned with all of our kiddos who are facing this graduation, but in particular with our junior class. Mr. Les Jack, the assistant principal, who's in charge of the keystones at the high school, he's already done a phenomenal job, what he has gone through, and he looked at students, whether it's their Keystone scores, whether it's their ACTs, PSAT scores, and he can already tell me, look, I know this percentage of kids have already hit this pathway based upon this score. He already has that information. So they are reaching out and having these conversations. They will have junior meetings with students to talk about things, to make sure that they're ready to go and graduate, and they will have those personalized meetings with the students and convey those, that information to parents, because it is unbelievably overwhelming. I'm very happy my daughter's a senior, and I'm not dealing with that aspect, because it is really confusing. And again, we don't know if this is going to change or not, because the state, Pennsylvania has, look, we don't think any of this is good. We think this all needs to be waived again, because of everything that's going on with the pandemic. This is just not the time or place to be worrying about this type of stuff. So, you know, we'll see what happens as we move forward.
Thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Williams, I just have a real quick question. So if the students were scheduled to take the keystones in the spring of last year, they're required to sign up to take it this year if they choose to do so? They can't wait?
If they were-
They could wait?
The Keystone last year, they do not have to take the Keystone again. They are exempt. So if they were scheduled to-
Right, but if they choose, but if they choose to do so, it has to be this school year?
Yes.
Okay, so kind of going back to what Ms. Mathis was saying. So if they were in Algebra last year, in middle school, geometry this year, Algebra II next year, they couldn't wait until they're in Algebra II to kind of have a refresher to take it?
They could wait, but I don't think that that would be something that we would necessarily recommend. I know Mr. Les Jack and I were talking about that. The concern is becoming that whether or not they're too far out, year-wise, to do that, we would have to look at the Algebra II, and to make sure it would align. And that's, back to also our summer programming, where I have the summer learning opportunities. There are keystones that you can run in the summer. Would it be prudent or beneficial for us to do Keystone bootcamps, to come to help prepare our kids in case they wanted to take them this summer, and they wanted to do something a little bit differently? Those are all things that we are definitely looking at in Spontaneity Towsky, as well as the scope and sequence of the curriculum. Would it be, would it be sensible to do after Algebra II? The initial gut reaction is, probably not good, years removed from it, but Algebra II, again, you're reviewing some of those basic skills and strategies, so maybe that would make more sense to walk through that. So again, we're going to weigh in with that and allow some of our math teachers to help us make those decisions with Mr. McKeon.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, Dr. Williams. Next, we have another presentation from Mr. Swindell, who's going to give an update on facilities and our health and safety plan.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, I'm here to talk tonight about what the facilities department has been doing since March, I guess. And really, our people and training our people is really the key of our program. The training reinforces a standard cleaning methods and COVID-19 cleaning protocol. Is Dr. Manarino, you sharing your screen?
Yeah, we can-
All right, I don't see it. Anyway, I'll just keep going. So we, Ms. Freeman and myself, to a lesser extent, have conducted training with the custodians, and it's been done in group settings, and also one-on-one settings when warranted. And it's really been the stuff you've all heard about, cleaning the high-touch surfaces, and proper cleaning technique is emphasized. And we're always looking at ways to do things better, and something else, something that was just instituted in the past couple of weeks, is we're making more use of wipes that we have in the department. And the custodians are cleaning each phone in each room with one wipe, and throwing that wipe out, in an effort to reduce cross-contamination of just using a towel and a spray and that type of method to clean a lot of the surfaces. And what we do that for is if a teacher has not worked, have worked the next day, it's done for the person filling in for them. And along with the custodial training comes quality control, and Ms. Freeman does spend a lot of time checking on the areas, making sure things are clean, the classrooms, the corridors, the stairwells. And again, when appropriate, one-on-one feedback is given to the custodians when needed. And the best way that she tells that the work is getting done is she uses wipes herself, and will pick surfaces out in the area that she's inspecting, and use the wipe and see if it's soiled after she's done wiping the surface. Next, the COVID-19 response strategy, and we put this together back in March, really, even February, when we started first hearing about the pandemic. And we asked ourselves what tools and what the custodians will need to perform their tasks, identify chemicals that could be used to kill the virus, personal protective equipment, and, you know, just following up with the custodians about, you know, using the gloves the right way, using a mask, and keeping themselves safe. We came up with a strategy to dispense sanitizers, sanitizer dispensers, wipes, and different spray disinfectants. And one of the best things I think we did was build redundancy into the disinfection process. And I'll get into that a little later. But another protocol we came up with is how we clean a room, or disinfect a room, where we know we've possibly had a suspected or infection, or a known infection. And it goes in, the first thing we do is spray the room with what's called vital oxide. And the room is sprayed, and custodians get out of the room for about an hour or so, or a few hours, and then they use wipes to clean the room, Don, because we, when we know we're dealing with a room that's infected, we don't, we take every chance to not cross-contaminate with another room. Spray our vital oxide again, and then in the morning, before anyone arrives, spray, have the daylight custodian treat the room with the vital oxide. Something we put a little bit of time into is the chemicals we use for disinfection. The first chemical is from a company called Genusan, it's NutraFect. And all the chemicals we use are FDA-registered to kill viruses and bacteria. And we've used the NutraFect for more than a few years right now, and that's used as a cleaner and a sanitizer disinfectant. And back in March, when this all first started, we identified a chemical called vital oxide, and that's what we mainly use to spray a room, Don, spray a room when it's clean, after it's cleaned, and treat the rooms, and hallways, the railings and the stairwells, every, we use the vital oxide on everything. And what we did was, by using these two chemicals, the NutraFect to actually clean and wipe down the surfaces, and the vital oxide to spray inside the rooms on all the surfaces, we've created redundancy in the disinfection process. And again, I think that's one of the most important things we did. If someone happens to miss something when they're cleaning a room, we should get it when we're spraying the room. And another chemical, we, well, I guess it is a chemical, is the Purell Surface Disinfect, and we use quite a bit of that lately. And we use that to mass-produce our wipes and fill spray bottles, and we pass them out as needed. In the next slide, I have some pictures here, just to give you a flavor of the depth of the work we've been doing. You see the Purell, we buy that in 50-gallon drums, 55-gallon drums for the vital oxide. We pump those chemicals into either a smaller container or right into the bottles, or, you know, whatever we're filling up. You can see the tubs of wipe we have ready to go out. And one of our more ingenuative maintenance people created his own little assembly line to fill the bottles of spray Purell. And what the two tools we use to disinfect the rooms, besides actual old-fashioned cleaning the rooms, Don, is we use an electrostatic sprayer, and we started using those back in March in the bigger schools, and eventually, we got one of those spray guns for each facility, and we just got a few more. We've had some problems getting batteries. I mean, some of them are getting a little old now, the batteries, and we've had a little bit of problems getting batteries for those, but I think we have some coming. And what we went to in the meantime was a, basically a garden sprayer with a battery and a little compressor on it, and the compressor's charged up, and the custodian can use those to disinfect the surfaces that they normally do each evening. One thing that people noticed between the electrostatic sprayer and the garden sprayer was the electrostatic sprayer put out a much finer mist. People would walk into the rooms, and they wouldn't even know it. Now, with the garden sprayer-type equipment, they'll see watermarks, you know, even on their paper or on a desk, and that's what if, you know, it's probably doesn't put out the nice fine mist that the electrostatic sprayers do. A little more here about our strategy. We've made about at least 30, when I'll call sneeze guards and put them at secretary's desk, some of the librarians, really, anyone who expressed a need for that, we got those sneeze guards for them. You can see two pictures here of separators used at desks. I believe that top middle one is from the middle school, and one of the counselors or one-on-one teachers use that. And we've custom-made them to fit just about each size desk. We do have a standard size, but when the need arose, we made whatever the application called for. When we came back to school, everyone had a gallon of hand sanitizer, a tub of wipes, and a bottle of Purell. So, and again, the hand sanitizer is an FDA-approved application that we could use. Another thing we did was, we got, I have 85 there, I think we got more, we got a bunch of automatic hand sanitizers built to stand for those. And those hand sanitizers were placed at each stairwell, at each entrance on each floor. So when people came out of the stairwell, they could sanitize their hands, you know, but they would be holding on to the railing, of course. And in each restroom, we placed another Purell automatic hand sanitizer. Also, at each outside entrance, or main entrance to each building, there's also a hand sanitizer, which has been around for a few years now. Something a little more with the mechanical side of things, when the students are in the building, we open up the outside air dampers to the air handlers, and there's building codes where we have to bring in a minimum quantity of outside air. There's different methods, methods to calculate what you need, but it's 75% outside air. All the air the fan is moving is 75% from the outside. So we know we're diluting the virus or any germs in the air. And we always did that, especially in the flu season. Something where you start to watch for, and we actually seen a little of it this week, but nothing too concerning, is as temperature gets cold, the air handling equipment in rooms, the fans in the rooms are the fans that treat large areas, and the boilers were not sized to heat so much outside air. So we got to keep an eye on that and make some changes when needed. And the house suites and rooms without windows, we use the process called bipolar ionization. And common sense tells you that the suspected infections are going to be in the house suites, and, you know, teachers could open their windows, and some teachers have been doing that, but in the rooms that are landlocked, there's a few of those at the high school and at Westview Elementary, we put the bipolar ionization device. And on the next slide, I have a little picture of how the bipolar ionization works. And what it does is makes a field of negative and positive ions, and these ions, as the viruses and molds and bacteria pass over kind of this plasma field, it takes the hydrogen out of the cells, and the cells die and get caught by the filter, or recirculate and caught by the filter as they make their recirculation through the room. And I won't attest to knowing all the science behind that, but when we chose that method, this is the pathogen test results from the, it's from New Calgon for the eye wave machine. And you can see that it kills 99% every 30 minutes in their chamber of the COVID-19. And not just taking New Calgon's word for it, we did look into how they had the device tested, and there's two reputable independent labs, EMSL and then Analytical Lab Group, and I called them and confirmed that they actually did the test, and the statistics that New Calgon puts out here works. Something else we did in the music rooms, in the choral rooms, in the band rooms, was place these EnviroClean sanitizing fans in each room. Some rooms are larger, so some rooms, such as the high school band room, got two machines. And what this machine does is, UVC lights have been used for decades to kill viruses and different things in healthcare settings. So this fan draws, you can see on the back there, draws the air over the UV light into a HEPA filter, and where the particles are collected, and it recirculates that room. So in the rooms, the music rooms, where the kids are expelling a lot more air, we've made this effort to keep the air that much cleaner. Something else we're doing, and this actually took a little bit of time, and we're doing this hopefully in the next week or so, or two weeks, at the senior high and middle school, is putting touchless tile dispensers in those rooms, and then we'll move on to the elementary schools and put the touchless dispensers there. And I knew we wouldn't have these, and that's why we came to the decision to put the automatic hand sanitizers in the restrooms also. Now, there's one question I get from time to time, because Wednesdays is a strictly virtual day, and that is, is there deep cleaning on Wednesday? And for the most part, that is not our strategy. Wednesday is a normal day for us. Teachers are in the building Tuesday evening. Teachers may be in the building on Wednesdays, and more often, there's, from the parking lots, I think there's more teachers in the buildings on Wednesdays than, you know, you would, some people would expect. And we clean those rooms, just like we clean the rooms every day. And the decision was made, I talked to a few of the principals, and it's hard to tell sometimes what room is going to be used or not used. So the decision- So the decision was made to clean every classroom every day, whether it's used or not. And it prevents any miscommunication with, you know, the teacher didn't make it that day, or they did make it, so we kind of rolled out that, that human error factor there. And again, I'm coming back to this. The redundancy in the disinfection process using two chemicals at two different times, I think, has helped us a lot. And my favorite is, deep cleaning is not synonymous, is synonymous or deep clean, when you're deep cleaning, you're not doing your regular cleaning on Mondays and Tuesdays. And that's what we leave the custodians with, is we want that full effort every day of the week. Monday, this coming Monday, we're, we will not, because the schools were closed all week, we'll have the custodians in on the daylight shift. And we do, we'll do some extra cleaning in the restrooms and the stairwells. And we have our eyes on the cafeteria floors. And with that, I'll ask if there's any questions.
Kevin, you sound like you're doing a good job.
Thank you, Dee, I appreciate that. Um, and, um, the custodians are doing a good job, Ms. Freeman's doing a good job. So, you know, it lies right there, I can make all the plans and, um, but it comes down to the people in the buildings doing the work.
You're right.
They are.
And our custodial and maintenance, oh, kids talk. Our custodial and maintenance department always rises to the challenge, always.
Yes, they do.
Uh, Mr. Little and then Ms. Philpot.
Thank you, Madam President. Kevin, I, I just wanted to come on. I'm glad that this presentation is here for the public, because I think it's one thing to tell the public, hey, we do deep cleaning on Wednesdays. And then it's another thing for them to truly see the amount of work, which is incredibly impressive, that we're doing to keep not only our staff, our students, administrative, safe here in the North Hills, so. I just want to say publicly, hats off to you and, and your department, they're doing an amazing job.
Thank you. And then along with that, we get good feedback from the teachers. You know, they, I've gotten a few emails the past few weeks, thanks, you know, thanking the custodians for the work they do. And we've went out, only to the middle school, but we explained to the teachers the processes we use.
Ms. Philpot?
Yes, um, I don't know if this, this might be a question for Dr. Manarino, but there was an article over the past week about how, how, how much more important focusing on ventilation is than, than cleaning surfaces, that we're really, really learning that this is traveling through the air. And as we're about
I agree.
As we're about to enter winter, you know, any teachers that have windows open, I would assume we're going to start to see that decrease, and anybody who's taking their classes outside, I would assume that's going to decrease. And so, I guess, so my one question, just, I'm thinking, are teachers allowed to bring heaters into their classrooms if we encourage them to still leave the windows open? And I guess for Mr. Swindell, is there, as we get into this, if we see a bunch of teachers closing their windows and not taking the kids outside anymore, are you, is there anything more that, that you need, that the custodial staff needs, that we should be doing to, to focus on ventilation?
The only thing we could do is add either the bipolar ionization or UV light systems to the air handlers. And we can look at that, and, and Dr. Manarino's talked about this earlier. The positivity rate for schools, positivity rate, but the infection rate's so low because the people are wearing the masks. It's not spreading in, in the air handling systems. I would caution against letting people bring in space heaters. The buildings, the electrical systems aren't built to have a space heater in each room. If we get into the case where we got to make that decision to look at how we're sanitizing the air and the air handlers, we, we'd have to do that.
Yeah. I'm going to guess that might be an insurance problem, too. That's just, I know when, when I taught and whatnot, we weren't allowed to have electrical things in rooms for those exact reasons. I'm just spitballing, but I didn't mean to speak and just wanted to offer that insight.
Yeah.
Kevin, I have a question.
Sure.
How often are we changing the filters in the univents?
We're still on our, our three-month cycle, so. During the school year, we, we change at the beginning of the school year, three months in, and we're right in the beginning of spring. And then people talk about using the HEPA filters, the high-efficiency filters. And you've got to be careful there, because a lot of the air equipment was not built to force the air across the HEPA filters the way it does. We, we were using a MERV 10 filter right now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions from the board? No. Thank you so much, Mr. Swindell, and thank you to everybody who's working so hard to keep our buildings clean and and safe for everybody. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ally.
Okay. Next, we are going to move on down to the Agenda to Action items. So this evening, I'm going to recommend that we approve all action items on this agenda via consent vote, because this is a legislative meeting, and we did discuss all these last week in the committee meeting, so I'm going to ask if I have a motion for that from the board.
Dee Spade.
Motion, Mrs. Mathis. Thank you, Mrs. Spade and Dr. Knollish. So now we have an opportunity for any discussion on any agenda items, or any action items, excuse me, rather, on the agenda. Do we have any discussion on any of those from the board? Ms. Philpot?
I just have a short request about, related to the search policy. So, you know, I talked about this a little bit for first reading, but I'm, I'm still struggling a little bit with just the difference between what the policy allows and what we currently do in practice. And as I said during first reading, after speaking with Dr. Manarino about the policy, I am comfortable with what we actually do in this area, but you know, not everybody is privy to conversations like that. So I just, in the future, when we look at policies like this one, I would just like to request, you know, personally, that, that they come to first reading with administrative guidelines already drafted and attached. So I don't know if that's something that we would want to, that we would need to decide as a board or whatnot, but just personally, for policies like this that required me to then have a personal conversation to understand it better and get more detail, I think it would have just been helpful to have the administrative guidelines already drafted.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions on any action items? Doesn't look like we do, so I'll move on to a vote then. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Knollish?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Poniatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Excuse me, I'm going to cough. Yes.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye, motion carries. Okay, we have a few things left then to cover. Mrs. Rennebeck, I understand you have a few updates for AW Beatty.
Yes. I know that there have been a couple of questions as far as, I think everyone, as far as families whose children attend Beatty, know that they've done a great job of keeping up on the website. They've done a great job, just as North Hills, as we have done, letting families know of any active cases. And just so everyone's aware, there are seven related cases in the Career Center, all have been from events outside of the Career Center. And all families, of course, have been notified. But on a good news positivity side, just wanted to make mention of the FCC LA officers from the Hills, there are a bunch. Malaya Johnson is the president, Amy Me, I don't want to, if I screw up a name, I apologize. Amy Mininghouse, treasurer. Josh Yeoman, secretary, and PM is Jacob Mann, secretary. And then student of the month for advertising and design is Marissa White. Automotive collision is Joshua Gickler. Culinary is Josh Yeoman's and Ashley McHugh. And then emergency response tech is Walker. And then Smart S, which is the program design for students who are looking toward the fields of physical therapy and occupational therapy, is Julia Admick. And that is all I have to report on Beatty, and thanks to my dog for helping.
He's just excited.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Rennebeck. Okay, we'll move on to then public comments on non-agenda items. So if anybody who is in the Zoom meeting has a comment, please go ahead and raise your hand virtually, and I'll quickly read the public participation policy. "We would like to invite any resident taxpayer or employee of the North Hills School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. The board does reserve the right to limit the amount of time allotted for public discussion of any particular speaker or issue. Some of your concerns can be quickly addressed following your comments, while others may require more research and discussion. When appropriate, you are welcome to further discuss your concerns with us following this meeting. We appreciate your interest." And I'm going to bring Mrs. Toni Reed up to talk. Mrs. Reed, are you there?
Yes, Toni Reed, 208 Oakwood Avenue. A question for Dr. Williams regarding the keystones. What about the kids that are currently in the honors bio? Because they would be taking keystones much sooner than the kids in regular bio?
Yes, ma'am. That's the only class, Ms. Reed, that is double-blocked, so they would be the only students that would be taking at the end of the course, which would be the end of the first semester. So those keystones are scheduled to be taken at the end of the completion of a course, which would be the middle of January. And again, that is one of the reasons that that letter is going to go out, but they are expected. The state mandates, if you are currently enrolled in the course, you must sit for the keystones.
So what if we're still virtual at that point?
If the course is still virtual, this is why the window was extended by the state to allow us an opportunity to bring students into the building, whether that is later on, or whether it's bringing students in in small groups and having them test at different days and different times. Those are all the things that we have reached out to PDE for guidance on. Great question.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Doesn't look like we have anyone else in the Zoom audience who wants to make a comment this evening. So I just have a couple of quick announcements. Dr. Manarino, I believe this, this one is still, we're still trying to make it happen, the drive-through light display?
Yes, we're still trying to make that happen, scheduled on Thursday the 3rd, I believe.
Uh, yeah, so the North Hills School District is hosting a drive-through light display on the Hilltop Campus, shared by North Hills Middle School and High Schools on Thursday, December 3rd, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM. All decorations and light displays will be planned and created by North Hills Student Clubs, Schools, and Organizations from elementary through high school. The event will be free to the public, but donations will be accepted, and 100% of these donations are going to go to North Hills families in need during the holiday season. And then my second announcement is that the next meeting of the North Hills Board of Education is scheduled for Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. I'm not sure what format we'll be doing in, so stay tuned, we'll either be in hybrid or, or virtual. And seeing that we have completed all the items on our agenda this evening, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Have a good night, everyone.
And someone has their hand up in the
Oh. Well, okay. Uh, I'll bring Lucas Palmero up to talk then.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me time to speak. I'm Lucas Palmero, I live at 214 Sixth Avenue, and I'm a sophomore in the high school. And I would like to share my concerns with you regarding the current situation at school, and I ask that you listen to these concerns with not just an open mind, but an open heart as well. Under the pressure of the initial school closure back in March of last school year, many students, such as myself and my peers, struggled. And we also struggled, struggled with the continued virtual platform at the beginning of this school year. And we will once again struggle with the re-closure of schools amidst the rise of cases related to the virus. And the virtual learning model and successful student education are incompatible. Many like-minded students, as well as their parents, are stressing on social media the importance of face-to-face schooling. I, myself, am beginning to fall behind, as I find material in classes such as math extremely difficult to consume, and I'm dissatisfied with the inability to run experiments in courses such as chemistry. Both these, as well as many other courses, are negatively impacted by school closure, as distraction is not just a side effect, but promoted by the virtual environment. It is unfair that students have no say in a decision that impacts us severely in these trying times. And that leads me to my next point, a pandemic worse than one, the one that we are facing. Students are at a severe mental health risk when it comes to strict lockdowns. And many students' only out-of-family interaction is at school with sports, clubs, and more extracurricular activities. It is these extracurricular activities that will improve our college applications and allow us to further our education with the best options possible. And this affects me personally, because I'm a member of the wrestling team, and we regretfully received notice that we'll be shut down until further instruction. We are a small team of no more than 15 wrestlers, and we all love the sport, we'll do anything in our power to continue. As the family that we are, I urge you to allow our family of students back into our schools, where we can learn properly once again, and give us the ability to participate in our sports and activities. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lucas, for speaking to the board this evening. Okay. For real this time, it doesn't look like anybody else has their hand up. I apologize for, for missing that. I'm going back and forth between a couple of monitors here. But I will go ahead and make a, a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening and wish everybody a good evening and a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Now, second app.
Good night.